Call the meeting to order. Do we have any items from the public? Come forward, state your name and your address if you would, and we'll give you three minutes.
Hello, my name is Paul Brown. I live in Burnie County, Darnville. And I've got a place down here in Fortsboro. And the county has been trying to take it from me. And I really don't want to give it up. I'm just wondering why. But, you know, why they want to take it.
This, this, this comment period is for you to give comments to the county. It's not for dialogue. If you want to get into a dialogue with the county and have conversation, you can set up a meeting with the county. You can set up a meeting with the county, county administrator, county council president, or you could ask to be put on the agenda if you want to have dialogue.
Okay. Well, that's why I come here today. I wanted to find out what we're doing.
Okay.
I mean, I got a letter, you know, they think they're going to take it.
I think the letter said, ask if you're interested in selling. It didn't say anything about taking the property from you.
They did a little bit.
If, if you'd like to give Mrs. Shul your contact information, she'll set the time up that you and I can meet. And then if we can't, you know, if you still want to meet with the council, then I'll schedule a time for you to come through the council. Be more than happy to do that.
Aye.
Aye.
That's, that's Penny over here. Any other items from the public? Anybody else? Come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Foskey. I currently have residence at 107 Pickle Court of Old Water.
What was your last name, Dave?
Foskey, F-O-S-K-E-Y. F-O-S-K-E-Y. That's as in Frank. Oh, that says insane, K-E-Y-Watt.
Your first name?
David. I believe that the letter that the gentleman just spoke of, I also received a letter in the county that says basically using the words standard domain. Now, this, of course, was, I don't think a formal letter from what I read. It just suggests that, hey, if you don't give me too much money, I'll take it. But, of course, I'd like to keep mine. So, if this is exactly what we're supposed to do, is give you an explanation and why. Also, it says that our property is only $33,000, which is definitely not the case. And, you know, we'd like to express that we would not like to have it taken.
Okay, he can do the same thing. Give Penny the information. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda if there are no modifications.
Shall move.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. It moves us into, into the consent agenda. We have purchase orders. Everybody looked at the purchase orders?
If the council will allow, if, I could call your attention to the bottom of page nine and the top of page 10 of the purchase order log. You'll see that there's a payment being proposed to Triad Engineering in the amount of $1,667.81. And that's for the remaining work that needs to be done to the Washington Trail subdivision. If the council will recall, on May 14th of this year, you did authorize a settlement with Flexon on the outstanding, on the bond for some outstanding work at Washington Trails subdivision. Since then, we paid Huntsberry Brothers $159,607.50. Triad Engineering a first payment of $20,824.76. And then, of course, this most recent proposed payment to Triad to deal with some, some, some roads and sinkhole issues. I've been in contact with both the president of homeowners association and also the management company for the homeowners association, and they now are satisfied that all the work has been done. So, by agreement, we will be issuing a check in the amount of approximately, depending on the interest, remaining of $46,359.43 to the Washington Trails subdivision homeowners association. And then that will take care of the work that needs to be done down there.
Good.
So, it's been done pretty, pretty quickly.
Good job. Good job. Glad, glad we were able to get that, get that resolved. Was, was it really, do we know, was it sinkholes or just settling areas?
Actually, we had a couple. Most of it was settling, but the most, this most recent one was some sinkhole problems that they came back to address. So, everyone is satisfied that it's been, it's been taken care of. So, we're ready to close out that account.
Okay. Anything else on the purchase order? Alan, I believe you're up for a couple of internal budget revisions?
You have, the council has two internal budget revision requests before you this morning, both from Sheriff Curtis Keller for Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Keller is requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 341 Supplies and Materials by $150. Current unencumbered fund balance is $98,048.48 with 32.29% spent to date. An increased line 218 postage by $150. Current unencumbered fund balance is $732.98 with 51.13% spent to date. The second request again is Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Keller would like to reduce, again, Supplies Materials 341 by $200 and an increased Contracted Services line 230 by $200. Both of those internal budget revisions are requested in anticipation of some bills yet to be paid this, this month. And we have been working with the sheriff to make sure that, and we'll discuss that more during the state budget revision discussion, to make sure that when he leaves office, that all of the accounts that he's responsible for at least has a balance of 50% or more.
And he understands that he has one more meeting to finish that and...
He does.
Okay. Is that for me?
No.
Okay. Any, just, any questions on that? All right. Good. Change of status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie DeLaGuetti, prosecuting attorney for Garrett Robertson as an assistant prosecuting attorney with an annual salary of $68,500 effective December 15th, 2020. We have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Jamie Smith as a deputy court martial with an annual salary of $30,844.00 effective December 16th. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Sia, director of community corrections for Miranda Cackley as an administrative assistant with an annual salary of $24,786.86 effective January 4th. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Sia, director of community corrections for Dylan Kiefer as a driver with an annual salary of $28,945.00 effective December 21st, 2020. Change in status received from Tim Side, director of community corrections for the following employees. Eric Squires is going from deputy court martial to home confinement officer. His annual salary is going from $32,156.16 to $35,000 effective December 14th, 2020. Crystal Peterson is going from JOTIPP project coordinator to peer recovery coach coordinator at the Day Report Center. Her annual salary will remain the same at $34,099.00 effective December 16th, 2020. Removed Dennis Byram from payroll effective December 3rd, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the sheriff's department for Bailey Bartholm? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Effective December 3rd, 2020. Letter of resignation received from the circuit clerk's office for...
And I've got a place down here in Port of the Paradise. And the county has been trying to take it from me. And I really don't want to give it up. I'm just wondering why. But, you know, why they want to take it?
This, this, uh, this comment period is for you to give comments to the county. It's not for dialogue. If you want to get into a dialogue with the county and have conversation, you can set up a meeting with the county. Um, you can set up a meeting with the county, county administrator, county, um, council president, or you could ask to be put on the agenda if you want to have dialogue.
Well, that's why I come here today. I wanted to find out what we're doing.
Okay.
I mean, I got a letter with a, you know, they take it going to take.
I think the letter said, ask if you're interested in selling. It didn't say anything about taking the property from you.
But it did on me.
Anyway, if, if you'd like to give Mrs. Shul your contact information, um, she'll set a time up that you and I can meet.
Okay.
And then if we can't, you know, if you, you still want to meet with the council, then I'll schedule a time for you to come through the council. Be more than happy to do that.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
That's, that's Penny over here. Any other items from the public? Anybody else? Come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Foskey. I currently have residence at 107 Pickle Court, Beverly Waters.
What was your last name, Dave?
Foskey, F-O-S-K-E-Y.
I'm sorry.
F-O-S-K-E-Y. That's as in Frank. That says insane K-E-Y.
And your first name?
David. I believe that the letter that gentlemen just spoke of, I also received a letter in the county that says basically using the words standard domain. Now, this, of course, was, don't think a formal letter from what I read. It just suggests that, hey, if you don't give me too much money, I'll take it. But, of course, I'd like to keep mine. So if this is exactly what we're supposed to do, is give you an explanation and why. Uh, also it says that our property is only thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, which is definitely not the case. And, you know, we would like to express that we would not like to have it taken.
Okay, he can do the same thing. Yeah, give Penny the information. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda if there are no modifications.
Sound move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It moves us into, into the consent agenda. We have purchase orders. Everybody looked at the purchase orders?
Now, if the council will allow, if, um, I could call your attention to the bottom of page nine and the top of page ten of the purchase order log. You'll see that there's, uh, a payment being proposed to Triad Engineering in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Um, and that's for the remaining work that needs to be done to the Washington Trail subdivision. Uh, if the council will recall, on May the fourteenth of this year, you did authorize, uh, a settlement with Flexon on the outstanding, on the bond for some outstanding work, um, at Washington Trails subdivision. Since then, we paid Huntsberry Brothers one hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Triad Engineering a first payment of twenty thousand eight twenty-four seventy-six. And then, of course, this most recent proposed payment to Triad to deal with some, um, some, some roads and sinkhole issues. I've been in contact with both the president of homeowners association and also the management company, um, for the homeowners association. And they now are satisfied that all the work has been done. So by agreement, we will be issuing a check, um, in the amount of approximately, depending on the interest, uh, remaining of forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents to, um, the Washington Trails subdivision homeowners association. And then that will take care of the, the work that needs to be done down there.
Good.
So it's been done pretty, pretty quickly.
Good job. Good job. Glad, glad we were able to get that, get that resolved. Was, was it really, do we know, was it sinkholes or just settling areas?
Actually, we had a couple. Most of it was settling, but the most, this most recent one was some sinkhole problems that they came back to address. So everyone is satisfied that it's been, it's been taken care of. So we're ready to close out that account.
Okay. Anything else on the purchase order? Alan, I believe you're up for a couple of internal budget revisions?
You have, uh, the council has two internal budget revision requests before you this morning, both from Sheriff Curtis Keller for Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Keller's requesting that he be allowed to reduce line 341 Supplies and Materials by a hundred and fifty dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is ninety-eight thousand, uh, dollars and forty-eight cents with thirty-two point two-nine percent spent to date. An increased line to eighteen postage by a hundred and fifty dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents with fifty-one point one-three percent spent to date. The second request again is Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Keller would like to reduce, again, Supplies Materials 341 by two hundred dollars and an increased contracted services, uh, line 230 by two hundred dollars. Both of those internal budget revisions, uh, are requested in anticipation of some bills yet to be paid this, this month. Um, and we have been working with the sheriff to make sure that, and we'll discuss that more during, um, the state budget revision discussion, to make sure that when he leaves office, that all of the accounts that he's responsible for at least has a balance of fifty percent.
And he understands that he has one more meeting to finish that and?
He does.
Okay. Is that for me?
No.
Okay. Any, just, any questions on that? All right. Good. Change in status. We have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie, uh, Delegati, prosecuting attorney for, uh, Garrett Robertson as an assistant prosecuting attorney with an annual salary of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty. We have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for, uh, Jamie Smith as a deputy court martial with an annual salary of thirty thousand, eight forty-four effective December sixteenth. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Sia, director of community corrections for Miranda Cackley as an administrative assistant with an annual salary of twenty-four thousand, seven eighty-six effective January fourth. We have a new hire recommendation received from Tim Sia, director of community corrections for Dylan Kiefer as a driver with an annual salary of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five effective December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, change in status received from Tim Side, director of community corrections for the following employees. Eric Squires is going from deputy court martial to home confinement officer. His annual salary is going from thirty-two thousand, one fifty-six to thirty-five thousand effective December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, Crystal Peterson is going from J O T I P P project coordinator to peer recovery coach coordinator at the Day Report Center. Her annual salary is going from forty thousand, sixty dollars to forty-two thousand effective December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Jason Maron is going from J O T I P P peer recovery coach to peer recovery coach at the Day Report Center. His annual salary will remain the same at thirty-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars effective December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, remove Dennis Byram from payroll effective December third, twenty twenty. Letter of resignation received from the sheriff's department for, um, Bailey Bartholm. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, effective December third, twenty twenty. Letter of resignation received from the circuit clerk's office for, um, Donna Bernhardt effective December fourth, twenty twenty. And a letter of resignation received from council office for Rachel Snaveley effective December eighteenth, twenty twenty. Bunch of change there, huh? All to the end of the year.
Just so the council knows, the Joe Tip Graham, um, is, Grant is the, what we, we call it the project aware, where the case managers and the peer recovery coaches actually went into the schools. Um, it was part of that joint grant that we had with the Board of Education. But of course, with the changes in virtual learning and things like that, um, that grant has pretty much gone dormant. And we felt that rather than draw down that grant for services that we weren't rendering, that we would transfer, um, Crystal Peterson and also Jake Schumarin over to another, other vacancies. Um, that grant is still available once the school systems, um, decide what they're going to do with their in-house enrollment.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, we also have approval of minutes for November nineteenth, twenty twenty, uh, Berkeley County Council meeting. Everyone was present. That moves us on to council calendar. Council calendar. We will be back here on the seventeenth. And I, uh, that will be my last meeting. You guys, I, I've got a whole list of things I want to change the last day. So be prepared for that.
It's gonna be a long meeting, right, mister?
Yeah, it's gonna be a long one, yeah. Well, we might as well just tell Doug to stay home again. We can handle this without him. We have, uh, um, we have on Monday, the fourteenth, we have, uh, Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting at four o'clock. In the evening, we have, uh, Water District meeting at five PM and an airport meeting at six PM. On the fifteenth, we have, uh, councilperson Mauck will be on WRNR at nine AM. Um, we have eleven-thirty AM Parks and Rec. Um, five, five PM Sewer District and six PM Stormwater, um, meeting. On the sixteenth, we have at six PM Solid Waste Authority. And, uh, it looks like after that, we only have two meetings before Christmas. Are they still, are they still meeting on the twenty-third with the CVB and the senior services, all that stuff still?
Senior Services are not meeting until January.
Okay.
I, the CVB is trying to work it out.
Okay. Just curious, little close to Christmas. A lot of times that stuff gets kicked off the schedule.
Monday, the fourteenth, uh, there was a special meeting for Region I Planning Development.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, let's see. What else we got? That's a, pretty much a board and commission calendar. We have a stop payment, uh, check request from the county clerk's finance office. Um, we have a bond reduction for twenty-eighteen Table Station Road LLC file number twenty-ten-two-sixty-two Engineering Department. And we have a bond reduction for Dollar General Bunker Hill file number twenty-eleven-dash-three-hundred with the engineering department. Morning Dirk. Do we have any questions? Anything we can give Dirk a hard time about? He's not gonna be around much longer.
This is the last.
Oh, well.
Thursday I will be in.
Be in. Well, hopefully that goes well.
The, um, paper station one, both of the commercials, what, uh, paper station one into the economy, those were, um, not the normal warehouses.
Flexed.
They were flexed and through the market. They had COVID primarily. They don't see the need to build the next building. So they basically put this down to wait until it come improves. Then they come in with a new bond and they start the next building.
Yeah, they do have some of the other one rented out though, don't they?
They, they've got about half of that facing building.
Right.
Having those, that's, you, they still got some space in there. So they won't look nothing up.
That makes sense. I mean, the general rule on that kind of stuff is eighty percent. If you get to eighty percent, you start moving on with your next phase, that type of thing.
They've got the whole site graded pretty much. So it's had ready. They have, uh, I told them not to finish their DMPs because they're getting all of them up. So here, the ground, they're eighty, ninety percent ready to go. So they can come in there, uh, and start rebuilding pretty quickly. All right?
Good.
Thank you.
Good.
For the opportunities I've had and, uh, for the best county and state.
Well, we, we think so. And it's, it's, and, and, and you've been an asset to help the county along. Um, when, uh, when you came on board, we were in, uh, in need of some help right away. And it was, uh, it was good to have you on board. Good, good to have you helping us. So thank you for that. All right. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Sound move.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There's Mr. Hess. Good morning. It's like you have two personal property tax exonerations for us.
Yes. Good morning. Uh, personal property office error. We had, we had two. We had to correct the size weight. And the reasons that's listed there. One was for one ninety-seven twenty-eight. The other one was for three dollars and sixty-two cents. Total, those two we corrected, uh, was two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven.
Entertained a motion?
Mr. President, I need to accept personal tax, uh, consideration. We owe you two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, we had a couple that's got a divorce and they need to, uh, separate their personal property vehicles so they can each pay for their vehicle. For Mr. Misses, uh, Mark Jeffrey and Angel Jeffrey. They have two vehicles with a total set value of nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. So we split the bills up. He got, uh, one vehicle is assessed for three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five. She got the other one at six thousand, two thirty, assessed value. And, uh, we just need your approval. So we can give them separate business.
Entertained a motion on the, uh, assessment?
Sound move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got one more?
The only other thing I have would be, uh, that patient for deep consolidation. We had this, these two parcels consolidated into one. And they wanted to separate it back out for Oliver Brighton-Boss. They had two parcels in the Hedgesville District, uh, NAP twelve R fifty-six and fifty-seven. And we separated them back out and, uh, so he could get two separate tax bills. And we need your approval on that.
Only thing I'd say is it looks to me like it's not completely filled out. It says, it says I blank. It doesn't have the individual's name in it.
Well, yeah.
Probably, probably should have somebody's name in it.
Yeah, yeah. I called that yesterday. I proofed it. And, but the Oliver B. Brighton-Boss is the name.
Okay.
I corrected it on this, but I haven't had time to get, get the topic discussed.
Okay. I see he has, uh, uh, signed it.
He has signed it. Uh, signed it and proved it. But, uh, uh, I noticed yesterday when I looked at these, uh, they have been labeled. So I corrected it. But it's Oliver.
Okay.
Brighton-Boss.
Okay.
President, I need to approve the application for deep consolidation of property at McCallum Trail.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Have a good day. Mr. Barnhart, you have? Oh, okay. Ten o'clock bid opening for, uh, uh, RFP Storage Area Network Upgrade.
Yes, sir. Um, as the council is aware, um, our technology is, is, um, dependent on having adequate storage for all the data that, that we collect. And it becomes particularly important with all the mobile data terminals that we have in the cruisers now and in the various programs that we've put in place over the years. Um, and so that every five or six or seven or eight or nine years, we have to, we have to upgrade our storage capabilities. And that's really what this RFP is for. Um, the RFP, um, that, that was distributed is, is for Storage Area Network, which is our, is our storage. Um, currently, we're on a Dale EMC platform, uh, and we will continue that. So when we sent out the RFP, it was for Dale EMC dealer-registered representatives. Um, we knew that the number of bids that we've received would, would be limited. And we actually only received one bid. When we put the bid out, we asked for three options. The option one is what they call complete flash array, which is, which is the, the bare minimum that we will need to upgrade our storage capabilities. Flash, uh, option two is actually, um, a larger version of the complete flash array. It's, uh, it gives us some additional storage capabilities. And we just wanted to see what those additional storage capabilities would be so that hopefully we won't have to go out, um, forbid again, um, as, as quickly. And finally, option three is for that data domain, um, which is our backup storage. So, um, option one and two are essential. We will have to do that, uh, pretty, pretty quickly in the not, uh, too distant future. Option three is standalone. If that comes in, um, within reason, within budget, most likely, Mr. Wine, who couldn't be here today, will come back in with an option, combining option one and three, or option two or three, or option one standalone, or option two standalone. So, um, we did, uh, send out the RFP to all of the Dale EMC dealers that were registered. Um, it was placed on our website. It was advertised in the Mark's Journal. We do have certification of publication that the legal ad, uh, appeared on December third, twenty twenty. The deadline for bids were four o'clock yesterday, and we received one, um, one response. And like I said, there should be, uh, price proposals for three different options. Option one, option two, and option three.
Okay. Well, it looks like, uh, looks like we have, uh, um, from Berry Solutions Group. We have, uh, option one is, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, option two is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-six cents. And option three is two hundred and eleven dollars, three hundred and nineteen thousand, thirty-six cents. And that's, uh, there, excuse me.
Two hundred and eleven thousand.
Two hundred and eleven thousand, three nineteen and thirty-six cents. Um, and that's thirty-nine thousand Industrial Park Drive, Suite Eleven in Altoona, Pennsylvania.
And we have dealt with this vendor freakies.
Yeah, I mean, the, the standalone sounds like it's the most reasonable. And that's the larger volume of them.
It is.
Sounds like they're pushing you to try to get that side of it, huh?
Yeah.
So what's allowed, what, what do we have in the budget for this?
Well, it's, it's lumped together under, under what we consider software. And it's well within the software budget. And if we need more money, the gents back there will just, will just bill nine-one-one for some additional fees and they'll help look for it.
There we go. There we go. Okay.
And that was on the record.
I think that takes care of the bid opening. So we'll go right back to, uh, Mr. Barnhart and see if he's got any board meeting reports he'd like to discuss today.
This one, um, uh, we met as a personnel committee at Region I Planning and Development Council where we, um, interviewed, uh, three applicants for the position of executive director. We selected one. And that one, that person will be, uh, brought before the full council on Monday and voted on. And hopefully we'll have an executive director voting. You can guess who it is.
Would that have anything to do with a resignation?
Well, I can't say.
Oh, okay. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Elaine?
Okay. I had a roundhouse meeting and thanks to Sandy and the EMI Development Authority, we had a Zoom meeting. And of course, with us, it, it was a real learning curve, the fact that you actually have to sign into the internet before you can get the link to work. And of course, we're down at the roundhouse and trying to figure out what's the domain, et cetera. It just, it took us about fifteen minutes to get all these, because I was the one in charge. And you know how bad that is.
Well, I'm sure you've had a whole lot of learning experiences here in the last six months anyway with, uh, with internet and Zoom and?
Yeah.
All the other meetings.
So it's really been?
That's good.
Hey, you might drag me into the twenty-first century yet, Dave.
That's right. You might not have a choice.
Kicking and screaming, but we'll drag her in there.
That's right.
So anyway, uh, a lot of things going on in the, with the roundhouse authority. Several issues, uh, that, personality. We have Jerome Kirkson, uh, that's worked on his master's degree. And he's doing a lovely job with this, uh, blacksmith shop. He's got figures that are, uh, that are standing there, ready to, to do the work on all the presses and all this other thing. And he's gonna have posters and all this. So it'll be an interesting, uh, because I would like to get it on video so that we can put it on the site to show how the work is done. So he, and we should have that in the next couple of weeks, what he's working on. But he's doing an awesome job. Number two, Clara Tyron, who has been our market core person.
Yep.
Uh, she's finishing at the end of the year here. And, uh, she has done an awesome job. So we, we, uh, thank those folks for their efforts. And, uh, on to the roundhouse business. We have a number of things issued. Uh, Mr. Copeland, several, like several months ago, he talked about the destruction of the roof of, of the roundhouse. And we've had some weather damage and we've had some insurance people look at it. We have a structural engineer coming to look at it next week. So we're doing a, a lot of, uh, labor, trying to get an assessment of what we need to do there with the roundhouse roof. Um, we got bids came in on the roundhouse windows. Uh, there's about a hundred and, um, twelve windows at the top of the copula. Down at the base, there are thirty windows that equal two of the others. So that equals sixty windows when you start from. The, uh, preservationist that is talking about rebuilding a lot of the windows is coming in a bid of about eighty-five thousand dollars, which was totally reasonable, I thought.
That's not bad for, how many windows did you say?
Uh, hundred and twelve and sixty, because the, the big ones at the boundary equal two.
Right. But I mean, they're not, they're not surface level working.
No, they're on, they're on at, at the very peak. And I mean, it's high up there.
Oh, yeah. No, I get it.
So, uh, we've got a number of things that we're doing assessments with. And we're still waiting on the parameters for the seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollar grant, uh, grant that we got from the state, which we haven't, uh, uh, got yet. And, uh, we've been talking about the weddings. We already have nine weddings planned for next year. And, um, uh, we have a Victorian hand sent. He was working with us, um, on the, for the weddings. And she is going to be making drapes to kind of cover up all of the artifacts that are back there. Uh, because sometimes the wedding people, they're not, they don't argue about the price of the facility. But some of the artifacts are a little, they're metal, they're old and et cetera. So this will allow us with magnets and the type of setup she wants to do to, to block that area off. And also make it, make it available for the caterer that can be behind things and not have to have all that out in, in the public. So.
I would, I would think you have plenty of room to do social distancing, even with a large group out there.
Oh, yes. We're talking about that.
That's probably one of the benefits. I mean, if you guys, if you guys haven't already, I would think you'd be working towards a plan so that you can lay that out and present that to people for large gatherings.
We've already talked about it because even the number of tables, if it's a five-foot table, instead of having s- six people at the table, if you have three, you're, you're within whatever distance you did. So, and there's plenty of space. That's not the, that's not the issue. Um, the, uh, engine, the train engine that we've been offered, uh, we got a number of people working on it. We got the specs and we've sent it to a couple folks that'll be, that's talking about able to move it. And we got some interest from, uh, I think it's like a BNI group down in, uh, Round Potomac, Maryland, that have some people that can, uh, that have the knowledge and know where the folks are. know where the folks are to do that kind of thing. Plus they've got a, a grant writer that knows where all this, as far as it was any extra money for doing that kind of thing. So, and I've been busy trying to, between myself and Jeff Hollis, trying to get the material to these folks. If somebody's willing to help, we're willing to send them material. So
I'll drive the train back down here.
Okay.
Tell them I've got a volunteer to drive the train.
I'll do that with you. I never drove one. I've drove probably just about everything else.
Same here.
Well, that'll save us a whole lot of like lifting and everything. We, the only problem is we need a track from the regular VNO track into the building.
I can get it there. Give me time.
Okay.
Well, if you come fast.
Not sure what it's gonna look like when I get it there, but I'll get it there.
So anyway, there's a lot of, lot of things happening and I want to thank the Economic Development. Uh, Sandy has stepped up and said that because, you know, we have a small group that we can use the conference room for our meetings in the future because the room that we, the roundhouse office is small, lots of space in the roundhouse, but cold is whatever. And then we were using the space in the Gaston Capery and it's a very small space and you can't, you're right on top of people. So, uh, and we'll be interviewing, uh, Jennifer Swisher here a little bit, uh, for roundhouse as a member from the Economic Development on, on committee. So I think there's a lot of things happening. There's a lot of, uh, numbers that are coming in on things that we need. Uh, we're working on a, a plan on how to have, handle all of this. We already have the schedule for next year and we included, uh, so there's something happening every month, uh, from the Irish Festival to Spring Fling, to the Raid, uh, to a wine festival. We're looking at a cornhole festival in July, uh, fire muster in August. Uh, I can't remember what's in September. Oh, it's a craft show in September. October is a big Halloween event. November is the Christmas, uh, craft show. And we're hoping to have the rig shop finished by November, December, so that we can have a big, uh, uh, New Year's party.
You know, I don't, um, and I, and I think it's great you guys come out to Development Authority and use the Development Authority Office as well. Um, it is nice that we do have a good conference room out there, but, um, keep in mind the city, uh, in the new, in the new police station, they have a whole room on the front and front of that, uh, of that police station that they call a community room. So I don't know if, if you don't want to travel out to the Development Authority, I don't know if they would let you
Our issue is we can't get in there right now. Everything is shut down. The building is, they don't, they don't even want you coming in paying water bills.
Right. Well, yeah, the whole city complex.
They got everything shut down. I mean, I, that's, that's someplace we wanted to look at, but, uh, uh, so I'm very grateful to Sandy right at the moment because I think the next three or four months, we were hoping that all this is behind us after maybe May. So, but it's been an interesting, uh, time. And then the other thing, um, Pack Horse Ford, uh, is the oldest road in Berkeley County and they're, they think
Berkeley and Jefferson.
Well, at the time that it came in, in 1722, it was Frederick County, Virginia.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the oldest road from Berkeley and Jefferson, but I think as far as the remnants with the, uh, the culvert and things that are still there, I think it's the oldest road that still has, uh, any demarcations, uh, left the state of West Virginia and we're going to be working on it because our 250th is 2022 and if the date is correct on the Pack Horse Ford of 1722, it'll be 300 the same year. So there's a lot of things happening, a lot of moving parts and just grab hold and let's go for a ride.
I'm sure some people that live out there would love to see some, uh, improvements funds for that road as well.
Well,
Three hundred years old, it's showing its age.
Well, the, the, the road, the, the area that, uh, cause the pictures I have is mostly just, it's just growing up and of course we've got all the culverts with the stone and everything else. And this gentleman, I think that owned the property, he's, his family has owned it for years and he wants something done before something happens to him because he knows it's there.
To keep in mind, the Development Authority owns almost all the property on the south side of that road.
Are you talking about Glengarry?
Yeah. Pack Horse Ford, you said.
I am, but I'm in Glengarry.
Oh, you're over the mountain.
Yeah. I'm in the oldest section. This is the section that's left completely.
He's talking about, of course, near vendors.
Well, I know where that, where that L and H and all that is. Yeah, I know that, but this particular section is, it's left is the remnants of the 1722.
I don't even know where it is back there.
Well, in fact, we were at the house, there at my house and I have this big 1890s map of Berkeley County down there with the flashlight. There it is. It's on the map and everything else. So, uh, we're, we're working on it.
Back, back in Glengarry, huh?
Yes, it goes clear over the mountain.
Goes across creek?
Yeah.
Towards the creek somewhere?
Yeah. And I'm trying to think, there was a picture of the creek, but I don't know which creek it is. I think there's a small string back there, but at the moment I've got to go back and pull them. There's just been too much this week. I haven't had time to really, it's like grab hold, get out.
I'd like to, I'd like to, when you get that, I'd like to shoot me a picture over to someone. I'd like to see that. Did not know it was over there. Is that all you have?
Don't have to shoot you.
Okay.
You can look it up. So thank you very much. And I think that's, that's this and then on to the next.
You're the next, yeah.
Had Paline in commission on Monday. It was, um, attended in person. There were several members under Zoom. I think there were seven public hearings. And, um, a couple, uh, participants were listening in and had a couple engineers that zoomed in and gave their, uh, presentation that they needed to. So there's still a little struggle with, um, with the zooming, but, uh, we're muddling through. Like they're all in, it was a pretty good meeting.
Okay. Um, I did have a Development Authority meeting. We had a, uh, about a month ago, I guess we did a strategic planning session and it was really interesting to discuss all the results of that. And, uh, there's a executive meeting happening next week so we can try to look at some of the, uh, plans moving forward. But one of the things that was actually high on the priority for the Development Authority, um, was looking to try to work with the county and the city together on projects so that all three entities were working together in the same direction. So I'm sure moving forward, um, you guys are going to hear more of that happening, um, in the future from Sandy.
I think that's, that, that is the main thing, uh, because I believe that as a group, we were very powerful, all of us are on the same, on the same page, but, you know, it's there. Too many times everybody wants to do their own thing and, and we're getting too many people to do our own thing anymore.
Well, and I think everybody has the same intention. Everybody wants to make the county and the city and every, you know, everything better. We were all talking about quality of life. Everybody has the same intention. So this, uh, this thought process is, is, uh, it may even involve hiring an individual to do, um, some of that as well. So
A facilitator sort of.
Right. Yeah. Somebody that, that's just works on that as well as a couple of the quality of life issues. So we'll see how that goes. I'm, I'm kind of excited about that level. Uh, we have a lot of things happening, um, with, uh, with businesses and interest in the county still. Um, we have, uh, most of the property the county, uh, Development Authority owns right now is, I'd say two thirds of it's probably under LOI. Um, so yeah, I mean, it's, 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 uh, um, it's interesting to be in that board and watch how things are, um, the activity that we're having, even with COVID, um, businesses are still wanting to move, wanting to move forward and continue to grow. So that's a good thing and then maybe, you know, maybe somehow that's even spurred it on. And I mean, if you look at, uh, life, uh, it always is when one door closes, another one opens and there's some businesses, for example, the ones that are making the face masks like you have, you know, those kind, those type of businesses are doing better now than they've ever done, you know?
Local distillery with, uh, hand sanitizer.
Uh, with the hand sanitizer. I mean, yes. So there's, you know, if a door shuts, there's always another door, uh, always another door that will open and, and, uh, you have to, uh, you have to be ready to, um, adapt and overcome and, and, uh, continue to move forward. So that's all I have. Uh, let's see, we have, uh, um, board and commission vacancies. See any movement there?
I'm going to wait till after the interviews we have before I appoint the senior services. So
Okay.
And the other issue I need, Mr. Ron Collins to be brought in for an interview.
Change Keith to be brought in for an interview.
Okay. Think you have another new application?
Angela Taylor, I'm sorry, just saw.
You want to bring her in for an interview as well?
Sure.
Did you get all that, Penny? Too bad, I missed out on Ron Collins. I haven't seen him in a long time.
You're welcome to, to any of the meetings.
I can, I'm, I may, I may.
You have to sit out there with me.
Well, you know, the, the, the current one's kind of quiet, so it may, you know, I'm sure I can lighten that crowd up a little bit out there for you. Um, okay. I'm guessing, uh, uh, I'm guessing that you're going to handle Gary Wine's spot.
Yes, sir. I am. Unfortunately Eddie and Jen are here and so they can correct me when I, when I misspeak. Um, as the council's aware, probably has been aware, um, it's been, uh, two or three years ago, we met with representatives of Berkeley Fire Association. And as part of that discussion, we talked about, or they talked about the migration from, um, what they call a static run configuration to a box area run card configuration. And it's been something that's been debated and discussed and debated and discussed. And I think, and I know Jen, Jen, you can come up and Eddie can come up also. I know you're here as a member of the, of the, of the audience, but you've been involved in this. I think they're almost now to the point, I know Jen was at the most recent meeting of the association where they're ready to go to a box area run card configuration. Um, in order to do that, we have to make some, some changes and reconfigure some of the software, um, for, to not, to the 911 center. Um, it's a, it's an internal configuration. Um, so what Jen and, and Gary are recommending is that we purchase the software that provides multiple features that will, will save us, you know, hundreds of, of hours of, of man time, of staffing, um, to, to make this, um, this migration from a static run area configuration to a box area run configuration. Yes?
Yes. It'll make it, it'll make it much easier.
And you want to explain what maybe Eddie can, or you or any
What is a box area?
What a box run area does? In, 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 for example, what I know from, from talking to some folks in Washington County, Washington does, does box run areas and they have four.
Wow. Quite something, yeah.
So this is not, it's not some, some, something new, so you can explain.
Sure. So what it'll do is it'll change the, the engine company being dispatched to particular units being dispatched. So instead of two engine companies from let's say, um, 40 and 30 being dispatched along together, it might look for an engine from one company, a truck from another company, different specific type of apparatus. But the software will allow to do is will allow, um, so the fire departments, they'll have to go out and individually, uh, map out what units are closer, um, to a particular location. Uh, it will give this company the information and it will, um, it will evaluate it. It will look at things like railing crossings, if it's a mutual aid company, it'll look at, um, stop signs and it'll configure what is the closest responding unit. So that'll make for some changes in dispatch as well, but this software will, like Alan had said, will alleviate a lot, hundreds of hundreds of man hours and some of the fire departments are already doing it, to my understanding. So it'll alleviate the system.
So, so a question for you, doesn't
Identify yourself for the record, sir.
Does, does that also, does that also take into consideration the scratch rates and failure rates of those particular departments that, um, that that piece of equipment may be coming from? Because I would think that that's a big determining factor as well.
And I can, I can, you can put a lot of information into this.
You see where I'm going with that?
I, I do. I understand your question. Unfortunately, you don't know whether somebody had that firehouse or not.
I understand, but if you have, if you have one firehouse that, that isn't able to, uh, and, and we'll take Baker Heights, for example, Baker Heights had a, a, a larger problem than some of the other fire departments of responding. So, um, that's why they have the full-time fire department now. But, um, but now they, they have a much better response time, um, they, and they have a much better than any of the other fire departments, I would think at this point. So does it take into consideration that department being a full-time fire service and having that better response time as opposed to one that is relying on volunteers or in, in the evening where it's solely volunteers and not with paid firefighters? That's my only question.
Yeah. I'm not sure that that was actually, has been built into the box, you know, certainly has been discussed.
This box dispatch looks primarily at the infrastructure of the county.
Yes.
The geographic, the geographic boundaries of the county and the run area and the equipment that's assigned each one of the run areas.
Yeah. And a lot of times, uh, currently, you know, the officer in charge of that incident, as it, as that incident may grow, he may ask for additional equipment. And today he has to specify what and where he wants it to come from. Whereas the box is already filled out, dispatch will be able to open the box and see exactly what he wants. They've been, they're working on those determinations still, you know, today to determine, uh, what pieces of equipment they want on certain, uh, emergencies. So, you know, it's, it's certainly not an old, uh, or not a new concept. The, the box assignments have been around for a long time. Um, you know, and, you know, as Director Catty was involved in, in getting this set up, to get it, get moving, uh, Jennifer has a lot of knowledge and experience to bring to the table, so she hit the ground running with it and will probably, uh, make some, uh, additional recommendations just because of her past. So, um, it's beneficial not only to the fire ground operators, but also to the dispatch centers.
Yeah. And don't get me wrong, I'm not talking bad about anything. I'm just, I'm just asking about the capabilities of it.
Yeah. It's just like, you know, you say, well, I know they're there.
Right.
At three o'clock in the morning, we don't have to wait on somebody to get there.
Right. Exactly.
And this is absolutely an enhancement to public safety.
Yes.
Far and away.
Okay.
This would be a sole source purchase, um, because the software is already in place and would be purchased through the 911.
At a, at a fee of $61,880 and that includes the first year of annual maintenance?
Set up and training.
Set up and training.
We're respectfully requesting that the council approve that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Some of
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Anything you guys like to add? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Good seeing you.
And, and Jen, you may stay, you may as well stay there, right?
Yeah.
You're just getting started.
Jennifer and I have been meeting regularly. Um, she, I've been, I'm going to turn the next 45 minutes over to her and I know she's really anxious with a lot of questions. She, she would, she would entertain, uh, you testing her knowledge at the 911 center. Uh, we've, she's made some great changes, um, not only from, um, morale, um, some of the things that they're doing in the center, um, have been dealing daily, um, with some of the challenges, the coronavirus. Um, she and Randy have been working hand and glove, um, with, with her. And as some of you know, I had an early morning meeting with Andy and, or with, um, Randy and, and he can't say enough about the cooperation that he's gotten from, from Jen. So, um, she has been a great, great, um, addition to, to your team. Um, one of the things that she and I talked early on about even during her interview was call takers and it's something that we've put in the budget. Um, we've had it actually in the general fund budget now for three years and have not worked out to the point where we were ready to, to do call takers. I think she and I agree that we're ready.
It's, you know, and nothing, and obviously we don't want to take anything away from the previous, uh, director because she did a great job, but it's, this is exactly what happens when you have another set of eyes, another thought process taking into a position or an elected, uh, position. Eddie's still back there, isn't he? Yeah. You get, you get another set of eyes, another, another thought process. So it, to me, it's always encouraging to see that happen and evolve and, and what's So, it, to me, it's always encouraging to see that happen and evolve, and, and what's next, uh, and, and we're seeing it now with the county. So, go ahead.
Thank you all very much.
And this PowerPoint presentation is also in your packets, so it should be in your read ahead.
Thank you. Um, so today I am claiming to the council to recommend that we move forward with, um, adding call takers to the dispatch center. Um, so we're going to start with a PowerPoint that I'm going to plug you all with. So this is a picture of our, our current dispatch center and, and kind of the layout. And I can get to Chad from the relations department, because he's amazing, and will be able to help you with this. Um, so, a lot of questions, a lot of times, it's call taking and dispatching the same day. Right now, our dispatchers do both things. They, they take the call and they dispatch the call. So they are doing both functions as one. Um, that, that type of dispatching is about 15 to 20 years old. So we want to kind of move this up into the future a little bit. So we're going to go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, in other centers, it is split into two separate functions, the call taker. That is the person that is going to stay on the telephone, and they're going to stay there until the call is completed. So there is not going to be a pause with the caller. Um, they are actually going to stay on that hold call the whole time. So I'm going to use an example, uh, right now. So if you are on the call, you're, a citizen is calling in, let's say, pre-act arrest. And, um, they're calling it in. What the dispatcher has to do now, in many cases, is put that caller on hold while they dispatch the, um, equipment to go to the house. Just imagine in a very high tense situation, we're giving instructions and we have to put them on hold. And the, um, way that I'd like to do it is move those into two separate pieces. And what we would do then is have the dispatcher and the call taker separate. So the call taker would receive that information, they're going to stay on the call the entire time, and they're going to give that pre-arrival instructions, the instructions like CPR, giving childbirth, stopping bleeding, being able to stay on the phone the entire time with the caller.
That's, I can see where that's very, very, and I never gave that a thought, but obviously that's a real big issue right there, especially if you're, if you're pumping somebody's chest, or you're, or you're, uh, have a baby coming out. I mean, for real. You, you, the last thing you want to be is, oh, you're going to have to hold on.
We'll put you on hold.
Hold on just a second.
Yeah, that's not good.
No baby.
I, you know, I never gave that a thought, but you're absolutely.
Seconds to a person in a traumatic situation feel like minutes, hours. It is, it is a different perspective if you're on the other end of that line. And our call takers, dispatchers, they are the first responders. They are the first person that the citizen has, um, that, that contact with. And we want that to have a good outcome. Um, so what we're suggesting is that the call taker takes the call, they stay on the call the whole time. And we're going to see here in a, in a second, um, that what they're going to do is they're going to stay on the phone. They'll send it, the information, send the call to, through our period of dispatch system, to the dispatcher. The dispatcher, it'll come up on their screen, and they will dispatch the information. They have all the information that they need right there in front of them, still while that call taker is remaining on the phone with the caller. The dispatcher dispatches the call, they deal with all the responding units, be it law enforcement, fire, EMS. So if you go to the next slide, please. So if you can't believe this. Should be out.
And if you remember, when we designed the 7200 square foot addition, which is to the, to 802, which is the new, the new dispatch center, we added call taker stations. So we have the equipment, we have, we have everything ready to go.
I, I can see, I mean, without a doubt, I mean, just, just, I, I've never thought of it this way, but I can see where, um, where the, the normal procedure could actually be a failure in the process, um, from time to time, just because of the way that it's done. And I never gave that in some real situations where you need to be there 100% of the time, you know?
So this is an example of a, a fire department call.
The audio on the TVs might be turned down as well. It could be turned down.
Let me, let me go ahead, you can explain to her, if you can, if you can play it, I would, I would help you, might just show it.
Is there a volume button on the TV?
Where's that darn area?
So it doesn't look like they're going to have the audio, but I can explain. So the screen, um, what you see on the screen right now is the curricula screen, so this is the call taker's screen. They're going to gather information from the caller, not with that. But, um, so they would fill out that information. They're going to give the, um, the address of the caller. They're going to get, through this, the address of the caller, the name of the caller, and what exactly is happening. So the call taker is typing in that information. So while they're typing in that information, talking to the caller, and asking some questions, they are also pushing that information over to the dispatcher. And if you'll see. Where it's a send up there, or if you zoom on the far right corner, when you click after asking just a couple of questions, it's going to send it to the dispatcher. And they, while they're still asking these questions and hearing the information, they are able to confirm, they're telling them to get out of the house, this was for a house fire, and they're able to give them specific information that will help to the fire department. So what it does, it's, it's kind of like I explained initially, is that you're going to be able to stay on the phone with the caller, give very important information, and get information that's needed for the providers, be it law enforcement, fire, EMS, and also give really good life safety information to the public. So if we go to the next slide. And that's just showing the first person taking the call, the caller, what the incident was, which was a single fat family house fire. And then it shows eventually, you might have. Then it shows the dispatcher dispatching and speaking to the responding units, without there being that type of disconnect. Go ahead, go to the next slide. Um, so how is this better? Um, it is more efficient and dispatched for having two people, um, do these roles. Um, and those roles are acting in parallel, so they are happening at the same time. Um, also, they're able, like I said previously, they're able to give those pre-arrival instructions. So it's important life safety, CPR, childbirth, lady control, of those types of instructions. And also, there will be time that is saved. So when you put that person on hold, although it might seem like you're getting to dispatch quicker, it, it does delay the information that you're giving to the citizen. And there won't be those long pauses. So there will actually be somebody there actually interacting with them. And that information was obtained from an article that I had gotten from, uh, one of the professional magazines that we utilize, they're not a professional. Go ahead and go to the next.
Obviously, seconds make a big difference.
They do. So my request to the council is, let's fill some of these seats, these empty seats. Let's blow up, um, what we have now and make it better, and make it better not only for the people that work there, but for our citizens who are really there to protect and serve.
So will, will the dispatcher be hearing the, the conversations as well, um, that's going on? Or are they just totally out of that and operating off screens?
Sure, they can, they can listen in, they have that ability to listen in, allow something to go on, but it's not necessary.
Right.
So in many centers, um, sometimes, not around here, but in bigger cities, they're almost separated into different rooms. So sometimes they are only dependent upon that information that's coming through when the software that we have will do some co-curricular analysis.
So it appears that the, the higher level dispatcher would be your call taker.
So actually, the, the person, an entry level person, is who I would suggest that we train to this position.
I see you're not, you're not.
The higher level person will be the person that will be dispatcher. We would eventually want them all to obtain and move up to be able to do it, so we can move people around.
And typically, your call taker is a, is like, is your, is your training position to move into the dispatch position. So, you know, we've, we've talked about recruitment and retention, and getting trained qualified dispatchers. With this, not only will enhance public safety, um, you know, we have the facilities, we have the CAD system in place that, to handle this. Um, but it'll provide us with, with a, with a training, for lack of a better, or better description, a training ground for dispatchers.
So, um, obviously, you, you know, I'm going to ask this question, what's we going to add to the budget? How many positions?
We have $300,000 in the general fund budget for this. We're talking about four initially, is call takers. Um, and we, way back when, when we, when we looked at, when we set the compensation classification scale, um, for, um, the call takers, which we also call telecommunicator training, uh, entry level's 36, 645. So we have the, I mean, it's already in the budget. We're not requesting any additional budgetary allocation. You're just, we're just requesting, and as I said, we've, we've had this in the budget for at least the past three years. We're just asking permission to, to move forward with, with it.
Brian's in the room. Brian, you had any comment you'd like to make about it? I mean, it sounds like to me it's a, a, a real good idea, but I don't listen to it from your end of it.
Um, we've been, we've been aware of this for a while. Uh, it's definitely a strong step forward, something that's needed. I'm glad to see that Jennifer, for a short time with it, she's tackling some of what we would look at as overhead projects. So we're on board, we're definitely going to reach out to her and see how we improve our side of the house as well. So, coming from, for, go forward, we use box alarm systems there. If there were so many things, even as a new person, just with a box alarm, prepare, it can at least get your mindset in what area I need to be going to as a new person, trying to learn a whole dispatch area. So we're very much on board with the feelings that we're going, and we hope that it continues to go down that road.
How many boxes would you anticipate Berkeley County to have, or does it piece of pan here or what?
You know, I was going to be, I'm still learning a little bit about, about that portion of it. Some of the information from the software that you just approved will help us, um, move along in that direction. I know that after we had the association meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago, that they were very much on board. That's kind of the comment that they were already about it. Um, I think that it is definitely moving in score. There are other counties that use that software as well, so some of that work will probably come for us. Surrounding jurisdictions using it as well, so we can keep that.
I'd just like to share what we thought of this.
I guess we can let you come back up.
I appreciate it. Um, I think that this will also help the morale of, of the folks in the center. You know, when they're taking that call, a lot of times, one of the very first things they have to do is get this person settled down enough to get that information from them. And then that same person dispatches that call. So that, that telecommunicator dispatcher is already head over heels into this call. Whereas with the call taker, they're a little bit removed from the actual dispatch. They have to, they have to get this, settle down and get the information, but then they're going to send it to the next person. So from a morale point of view, and a, I think it will help them immensely. I think that, that the emotional side of their job is something that most of us don't understand, what is real. So, you know, PTSD and dispatch is real. I think that this will help, uh, minimize some of the problems that they're having.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think it's a good point to bring up, because I, I could not imagine doing their job and dealing with the things that they do from, deal with from day to day. So, yeah, I think, I think it's a good point to bring up, that anytime you can help that situation as well, it's, it's definitely worth doing.
I think what it'll also improve on is that currently, it's taken, or between three to two years to have someone weird, that's what we call it, um, to be able to function by themselves. This should dramatically reduce the amount of time that they are in training, so.
For dispatchers.
For, for, for a call taker, and then eventually dispatcher, but to get them working and in some seats, filling those seats will again, like a four to six month range, instead of 12 to 24 months. And I think that that is, is very important, and it also does not overwhelm that brand new person. But now we have three brand new people that are working, they're overwhelmed trying to learn everything at once. And sometimes that's where we lose people, and that's what I don't want to do. It's, I want to retain and I want to keep those people, and this is the way to do that.
And that's, we, we've actually had conversations about this in the past, about getting some people in there to start and work as the pool to move forward with. So I think, yeah, kudos for, for looking at, at this as, as a benefit for all around, it sounds like to me.
So we have the facility, we have the equipment, CAD system can handle it, so we're not asking for any upgrades there. We have the budget. All we're asking for from the council is, based on the job description, allow us to recruit four or five, uh, call takers.
I think I'll entertain a motion to, uh, allow for the, um, recruitment of call takers.
Same.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. That was easy enough. And good information, really. That, that's, that's a, that's a side of it that I'd never given thought to. So it's good to, for me to learn that as well.
Chad will put this out on the. Yes, sir.
In addition to that, uh, I think that Chad and I are also working on our new recruitment campaign. We're going to promote, control recruitment, as well as, uh, bidding for recruitment.
Good.
So.
Bilingual?
It's salary adjustments?
Bilingual, please.
Um, yes. So I, my next request is to, um, give a, a yearly stipend that is certified by bilingual, or non-homosexual. Uh, we currently have one that is certified in Spanish, which has been utilizing it, um, to assist us. And as we grow as a community, much as Spanish, but other languages may, um, a, a good benefit to us of allowing. Currently, we use a 911 language interpreting line, which would enable us to not have to utilize that. Definitely, and I have another one pointing to the certification process is there. So we are asking for a $1,000 yearly stipend for those employees who are certified, and keep up their certifications, which is a benefit to us and to the citizens. Um, there's also a software portion similar to what you saw on the screen earlier, but it changes if it's Spanish, so when they're reading the instructions, although they know English, they can read the instructions in Spanish, so there's no confusion. They'll also.
Have any other languages that you get out of the.
So every once in a while, um, we'll have a couple of older languages, Spanish is primary, but sometimes French, you know, maybe some of the, um, areas from the, like Russian countries dialect, it, it just depends. And since we're. And since we're in a main corridor with eighty-one, we're really unsure what language. Years ago, I took a class, paid twenty-one minutes to hear at the language the person was speaking, and that was with other interpreters on the line.
And it turned out to be someone, someone who requested.
Or New York, or New York.
So this, this absolutely would be an enhancement.
So is that like a translator kind of is what you're talking about?
Well, these are, these are folks that we have one that is, that is, this bilingual that's fluent in Spanish. And she's certified, and we have another one that's in the process of getting her certification, so. And then we've, have we ordered the software?
The software actually came in lower, but we just ordered the software, I believe it's three hundred eight dollars.
Yeah, we've ordered the software to assist with that. But as, you know, as our community grows and we get this western migration, we're getting more ethnic groups. So this would, this would better prepare us for that. And then since this is a little different than what we do for some of our other certifications, that's why I asked Jen to come in and seek the approval of the council.
And I think the census will show that because in two thousand ten, we only had, I believe, like five to seven percent other than American, uh, or white Caucasian folks that were in Burke County. So with this influx of folks, I think it's going to show that.
But this is no different than anything else. We pay for certifications every time. If, if you, if you move up the ladder with different certification, different tra, training, different education, you get paid for it.
Right. Well, this, this certification increases a little bit more than we typically do only because of, as it is, it, it does require a different, you know, really a different.
It requires a whole different use of the side of the brain.
It does, it does, which certainly I would not be able to.
That side of mine doesn't work.
I know.
I, I've only got one language. That's West Virginia.
And again, this is funded through the nine-one-one fee, and it's within, you know, we have the budget for, but it is because it is a little different. And we wanted the council and the community to be aware that we do have some bilingual dispatchers. We thought it was important to bring it to the council.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Not? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, looks like that, that part's taken care of. You have another one?
Random drug testing.
So I am asking for everyone that works in Central Dispatch to be considered for random drug testing. It gets very important. We do it right now at the beginning of, of the career. We think that it is important to do this monthly also for that. All of our employees are drug free and capable of doing their job. This, this helps us protect, this protects them.
And what we would do, and we've already reached out to Valley Health, who we have a contract with to do our pre-employment physicals and pre-employment drug screening. What if the council allows us to pursue it, we would, we would get with Valley Health. We would give them the names of everyone that's subject to, to random drug testing, and the state does allow public safety employees to be randomly drug tested. We would put all thirty, couple, how many, how many? Thirty-one, thirty-one. And typically, what I would do is I throw my name in the pot just to show that, you know, it's, what we're doing is fair. And they would then on a monthly basis, they, it was almost like a lottery. They would, they would, and I forget what the, what's the percentage that they pull. Yeah.
It's based upon your number of employees and then they, they pull it. So I would say it's probably about two.
Yeah, so anyway, they would, they would randomly pull out of our lottery employees to be drug tested. That way Jen's not doing it, I'm not doing it, and, and then they would notify Jen, these are your employees that have been selected for random drug testing. One needs to come in on December fourth, another one that comes in on December, well.
So, so then in reality, somebody could still be got two months in a row because it is random, your name goes back in, whatever. And I think that's a great way to do it. And that was going to be my question. How are you going to, who's going to determine the random?
Yeah, this is, it's, it's a blind, it's a blind third party. And then they would, once you, and, once you get selected for random drug testing, then Jen or a member of the staff would physically accompany that person to the test site.
Don't see a problem with it at all.
It's a great, it's, you know, it's a great feature.
I'm all for it.
Does that mean you're making a motion?
That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right.
Before Jen gets to the very last thing, we haven't listed on the agenda is new positions. These are new old positions or old new positions, positions that we have had in the past that through, because of staffing shortages, because of retirements and things like that, we've either consolidated under, under one. We've had an example for the, the CAD administrator we took when Mayor, when Margaret Hopeland retired, and many of us were at her retirement reception. When Margaret retired as our CAD administrator, we actually put those duties with, with another employee down there. And it's not fair to the employee, and we're not doing justice to the citizens by, by, by doing that. So these, they're listed as new positions, but they're not new positions. They're new old positions or old new positions that we want to bring in. They can explain why.
And Margaret's position, she was actually what was teletype for the CAD person to that role.
Right.
So I'm going to start first with the quality assurance position. So quality assurance is very important for dispatch and call taking as we move forward. As I came into the center, I've had a great opportunity to spend a lot of time with the dispatchers and to listen to their nine-one-one calls. Just like school students, sometimes you will slack and not do things as you're told and read some of the instructions that they're written. Quality assurance allows us to make sure that they're doing the job and doing it right. And the purpose of quality assurance is to catch up to doing it right, if you want them to do it right. Currently, right now, I, I see the, the lack of quality assurance causing us not to be dependent right. I think that having a quality assurance team is imperative to seeing this grow as a communication center. I think that it's definitely needed. It is seen in most communication centers throughout the state, throughout surrounding jurisdictions. And this will allow them, what quality assurance does is they will randomly listen to a certain percentage of phone calls. And there is software, again, that goes along with it, and we already have that software. And it will allow you to go through and listen to and make sure that they're doing it correctly. If there's not, there's education portion. And that's where my deputy director, Paul Wilson, will step in and be able to assist and make sure that they're doing it correctly. Because the amount of calls that we receive every year, last year, November, last year, and November of this year, we did about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand calls. So that is a lot of calls. We're going to keep increasing. I would say this year is probably, I did not look at the years previous, but it probably went down just a little because of industry right now. Not as many people, some people were scared to call nine-one-one for help, especially during the early parts of it. So there might have been a little bit of a decrease. I'm asking for a full-time for this position that, which was there previously, a full-time position. I'd also like to ask for a part-time position. Because in order to do this, you should be doing about three percent of all EMS, your general fire. At least a minimum, one percent of these calls should be, should be reviewed, to make sure that we're doing it.
Audited.
Audited. But the quality, not quantity, better quality needs to be the best. And I, I think we have the staff that certainly can do it. It just, it needs quality assurance.
And it goes, not only goes back to, to public safety and public confidence, which we, we want people to know when they call our nine-one-one center that they're getting quality assistance and that, it, it, you know, it's the theme that you have before you today, you know, call takers, drug, drug testing, quality assurance folks. So, you know, we always strive to be the best in the state. And, and, and I'm certain our nine-one-one center already is, but this, this adds that extra layer of, of protection. The other thing that it does, if you're ever involved in any type of litigation as a result of something that may or may not have been done at the nine-one-one center, which we have, nothing, pending, nothing that I'm aware of, this gives that, that additional, it minimizes our exposure to, you know, to those types of claims.
Yeah, and I have, I, I've had a call in the past where somebody called and said there's a favoritism going on for this individual. This, this person's got to do this, and this person doesn't have to do that, and that type of thing. And I'm sure that, that this position would resolve any thought process of that even happening because everybody would be held to the same standard.
Yes.
I'm just glad to see that we're at that particular level. Because we was, there was, the three of us started back in two thousand eleven. We were having trouble maintaining a, a number of dispatchers and that kind of thing. So, you know, this kind of thing was something as, as where you wanted to be, but we didn't have the stamping and stuff to do that.
And, and we, it's, as Jennifer stated, I mean, it's in our, it's in our compensation scale on the position. This is not a new classification, but as, you know, at one time, we had a serious glut of dispatchers. So it was all hands on deck, and we had to put everybody on the floor. So as a result, this kind of position, we needed people to have their, their selves in front of a console. We didn't have the time for them to be, to be reviewing tapes the way they should be. Really, really glad that Jen has, feels that we're at the point where we can bring that back.
So you know what I'm going to ask? What about the budget?
It's, it'll come out of the nine-one-one fund. You know, just got the reconciled fund balance. There's more than enough money in there. The salary range would be the same as an assistant director, deputy director, but the assistant director with the salary range of forty-nine to ninety-two, fifty-seven, seven thirty-seven for the full-time.
And the part-time is going to be hourly?
It would be hourly, and it would be comparable to what we're paying part-time, maybe a little bit more per hour because there would be no.
Right.
But again, it's, it would come out of the nine-one-one fee, out of the fund, so there would be no general fund allocation, and the, the budget can sustain that.
Good.
Is it possible?
Part-time, what do you mean?
As needed, I guess.
Part-time as needed. Probably, it would be less than twenty hours a week.
I'm going to deploy a computer aided dispatch software support specialist and a part-time computer aided dispatch software specialist.
That's actually the quality assurance.
Quality assurance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further conversation?
Of course it starts as you're going.
We would start recruitment next week.
Anything else you'd like to add? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
One last one. You're batting a hundred. You guys have been awful easy on her.
He's not out, but go ahead.
Jim's a little sleepy down there.
Um, so the next position that I'm requesting is to separate the currently combined teletype and CAD specials position. And so two separate positions. Who would say Ben's still, as I kind of mentioned earlier. This is a, a very important part in our nine-one-one center going. CAD has changed from the days of old, the old box system, up to very high technology. We are expanding what our CAD system is capable of. The person in this position has to have very good technical experience. They're going to be able to integrate the new software, which is for Duraler barb software. It will be part of what this person's job will be also, along with the IT department, going to work closely with the IT department. There is a person that currently sits under these two titles. So I'm asking that we advertise the CAD administrator of sort, CAD, computer aided dispatch software specialist position. And take that separate into that and advertise that position. CAD takes many, many hours, a lot of dedication. It is, if we don't have CAD, we're back to paper pencils. And if you talk to any of the field providers, CAD is very important. It goes out to our blackboard officer, who have local data terminals. It is used by ambulances and paratrots that also have that, where they get all of our information. The call taker passing through that information through the Q A to the, to the dispatchers, that's where all that stuff, all those, oh, everything has to work together in harmony and, and, you know, so we can be successful. This is a very growing field, and as we move forward with next generation nine-one-one, which you'll hear a lot about next year, we are moving ahead. There's a lot of new things open to our eyes in Burke County in this area. And since this position will be just growing and booming.
Right. It is, so, so there's a need for, for this combined position. There's enough work to keep these, both of these positions full? Because it seems like we had this discussion about three or four years ago about, that at that time, it wasn't believed that there was a need to, to have that.
Well, and, and when we combined the positions years ago, it was only supposed to be a temporary consolidation of duties, and we've just never separated them. And if we truly want to take the next step into next gen nine-one-one, which I think we, we have to do sooner rather than later, it's essential that we have this, this position in place because they'll be, they'll be intimately involved in that process.
What's the pay on this position?
We have not sat down and even checked that yet, but we'll work with Gary. But again, it'll come out of the nine-one-one budget, out of the nine-one-one fees.
So if, if we're going to approve it, should we be approving it, that, that, that pay scale is going to come back to the council? Or is it going to fit in a certain part of the pay scale?
It will fit in. It'll be comparable to an IT analyst position.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to hire a computer aided support specialist.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Anything you'd like to add, Jen? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, I'd like.
Like the Christmas list.
It was kind of Christmas list. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
I'd like to thank you for your, your vision and, and looking, being able to come back in a couple of months since you've been there and be able to come back and look at ways to improve. And, and I think that's, I think that's probably the reason why you were chose for the job. Because it was thought that you had that ability to do that, so.
And it's all has to do with public safety for the citizens of this county.
Absolutely.
Definitely. And I, and I think we're moving in the right direction. I have a really great team, a lot of great support, so I'm very thankful. I've been there to support me as well as the remainder of the county. It's always been there. Many questions. I appreciate it. Very nervous about some of the things I don't think I want to do the rest of the year.
Thank you.
We can take a second. Thanks.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we're going to take a, take a.
We only have, you have your candidate interview and then just real, something real short.
We have, we have Jennifer. So you're not going to be long-winded, what you're saying?
I can do mine in a few minutes.
Okay. All right, so, well, why don't we go ahead and do the interview then? Are you okay with that down there? You got to take a little break or something?
Yeah, I'll stay awake.
Okay. All right. Jennifer, would you like to come up and tell us who you are and? All right, uh, Jennifer, would you like to come up and, uh, tell us who you are and why you're here? And what's your background and why you like the Roundhouse? Nice face mask, by the way.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't think about that, sure.
Sure, sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone, my name's Jennifer Smith. I am a Berkeley County resident for the past nine years. I have a history of work as well. Currently, I'm with the Berkeley County Development Authority. And I've been there for a year and a half. I have trackings.
I got to meet one on Saturday or Sunday, wasn't I?
Yes, yes, we do.
I apologize, didn't put the, the name right with the face, but, um, I recognize now.
Brought him along with me.
Okay. It was a fun day.
Perfect, yeah, it was a good day, because I think he got to learn some chemistry and biology and.
Yeah, yes, he did. So did I.
But, um, the Roundhouse Authority is, um, I thi, I believe it has a lot of potential. I think that Elaine and her group is doing some great work and I'd like to see where I can take it further along.
Jim, you awake?
Yeah. Uh, since you're in the application, Parks and Rec.
I am, um, on the Parks and Rec.
Oh, you are.
But you represent the city.
I'm, I'm representing, well, actually, I'm representing the Board of Education.
Yeah, yeah, because there's three different slots, yeah.
Yeah, so you represent.
So there was some confusion on that aspect of it when I was applying for that board.
So you're currently on the Parks and Rec board, representing the Education.
Yes.
And you also went on the Roundhouse Authority.
Yes.
And you have an interest in, what's your degree in?
I already have a degree in resources.
And what's your interest in the Roundhouse? Train, history?
Well, I like the history of it. I think it, like I said, it has a lot of potential. And, um, I think it needs to be utilized a little bit more. Um, while I know that they're, they're maybe have concert and venues, I know they have wedding venues at the end of the town, but just to get more people involved.
Well, always want more people. I guess the way in broad, broad map.
Well, uh, Jen, work with us yesterday evening on that Zoom, it was a challenge. And, uh, the fact, with the fact that the county does not have any place that you can seat more than two-hundred-and-fifty or seventy for a meal. Well, if we get this, when we get this bridge shop completed, that will seat four-hundred.
Not six foot apart?
Huh?
Not six foot apart?
No, not six foot apart, but at five-foot tables.
Okay.
There's no place, but, but the bridge shop, excuse me, the, the frog shop, we probably could seat four-hundred, six foot apart, because it will seat almost seven-hundred people at, at five-foot tables.
No.
But the, but the, at this moment, the building plans are with the bridge shop trying to get the floor down there. And I really thank you for being interested in working with us. But I think, as far as economic development, I think it's gonna go hand in hand with showing that what we have here in this county, because that's the only, what should I say? Uh, community-type center that would be able to handle the numbers that we're, we're looking at for down there.
Yeah.
Yes, you've had a minute, sir, yes.
Jim?
Jennifer, thank you for wanting to apply for this. There's not too many questions I want to give to somebody that's willing to volunteer. And, um, I like the idea that, uh, that you see the potential there and want to get it out to the other people to understand what we do have. And it's a lot, I don't want to compare the two, but the two are a lot like the Airport Authority was. It was a diamond out there that we have in this county and now it's beginning to shine. And I'd like to see the same thing happen at the Roundhouse. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'd like to see that, that, I'd like to see that shifted from the Airport Authority as being the largest unused asset east of the Mississippi to the Roundhouse.
No, no, we don't, we, we want to get away from that.
Uh, thank you.
So Jen, thank you very much for, uh, wanting to, uh, continue to get more involved in the community. Um, although you do have a job, is this, uh, is this going to interfere with what you, uh, are currently doing? Because we plan to put more work on you at the Development Authority as time goes on.
I'm always willing, um, but it's at six o'clock, it's after work hours, although I'm not working. I was at work yesterday when I started, so my hours are a little different today because of school hours.
Okay.
Say with three, the preach kids, I imagine that is quite the, the juggling act sometimes, but no.
I can do a lot of what I do. The S F U, six o'clock.
So no con, no conflict? Okay. All right. Well, I, I appreciate you coming in. We generally don't, uh, we don't make appointments on the interview process. Um, we'll, we'll see what Elaine wants to do moving forward. That is her board. So, um, appreciate you coming in today and interviewing.
Thank you, Jen.
Good to see you again.
Okay, Ellen?
Um, I have two matters for the council's consideration. Um, the first is State Budget Revision Number Seven, which will be the last state budget revision we do get this calendar year. Um, since we did, um, the one in November, late November, we've had eleven checks and HCHs totaling forty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars. Typically, we wouldn't do a state budget revision with that, that, um, sleight of activity. But, um, as you'll see once we get down and talk about expenditures, we needed to do the, do this state budget revision to make, uh, some of the, the departments right. Uh, under revenues, a couple of things of note, we did have seventeen thousand, fifty-five dollars built through for IT services. We also received, um, uh, a claim payment from, uh, West Virginia County Risk Pool in the amount of, uh, fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-six dollars. If the council will recall on September, or will recall on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty, we did have a sewage backup in the Sheriff's Department, um, which required, uh, Master Dry to come in and do some cleanup for us. Uh, we had to do some drywall repair, we had to take up the carpeting. Uh, we actually had two workstations that, that were, were damaged, um, beyond, um, repairs. We had to replace those. Um, the risk pool, the total amount of the claim that we submitted to the risk pool was sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-six dollars. Um, they did pay the claim everything but our twenty-five-hundred-dollar deductible. So, um, and that included, uh, uh, time and materials for, for our facilities, maintenance personnel. Um, so that, um, we, we do have the drywall repaired, um, the offices have been repainted. Um, the, the carpet contractor was in yesterday to see whether we could match up, up the carpeting of what was there originally, uh, impact. Um, actually, it was an, an old, um, cast-iron pipe, um, that had gotten corroded and there was some, some blockage. Um, and at the time, it was just the sheriff's, uh, restroom that we thought had been backed up. And when they took the cover off of the, the cleanout, which was at one of the offices, Jack said it was like a, a guise or from the pressure that had built up in the pipe. Um, so it was, it was quite a mess. Uh, Impact Furnishings actually was there yesterday and set all the furniture in place. Um, so you'll actually see the payment for that furniture on your purpose over low, um, yet this year.
Nobody jumped back with the lid and tried to push it down.
Can't imagine why.
Yeah.
I've seen it with my own eyes.
I have too.
So I'm recommending that, uh, as far as expenditures goes, you'll see that, uh, the, we, we do have a balanced state budget revision of forty-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars, which increase, which indicates expenditures. But, um, we're actually moving four-hundred-and-six thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars out of your contingency account, um, which will leave a balance in your contingency account of, of slightly more than three-point-three million dollars. Um, I'm recommending that, um, we, we put a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in the county council's professional services account, uh, which would be account, uh, four oh-one, two twenty-three. Um, that's needed to pay for seven months of your leg, for your legislative services consultant. Um, that contract became effective December first. We had the first meeting with, with that consultant last Thursday afternoon. Um, the council met with, uh, Sheriff Keller, uh, to talk about the deficit that he was going to have in account four oh-nine, advertising and publications, um, due to an outstanding bill for tax sale. Um, so you did commit eighty-five thou, at, at, at least eighty-five thousand dollars to, uh, fund four oh-nine to make sure that he had the necessary fifty percent carryover. Um, the addition of the, of the eighty-five thousand dollars to that account will leave an unencumbered fund balance of a hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ninety-five cents, or fifty-three-point-one-five percent, so he is above that fifty percent threshold. Um, I did look at, um, Departments four oh-four, seven hundred, seven oh-one, and seven sixteen, which are all the accounts that come under his control and he will be above that fifty percent threshold. So no additional infusion of funds are needed for that. Um, a hundred thousand dollars into supplies and materials. Again, that's, uh, to represent, uh, reimbursements for some of the PVE, PPEs and building repairs that we're doing. Uh, the seventeen thousand, fifty-five dollars back in information technology. And then last week, uh, or the week before, the council approved, um, the additional allocation from contingency to the airport, uh, in the amount of a hundred-and-twelve thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. That payment has actually already been made. Um, and if you would look at the, the most recent control reports, you'll see that that account has a deficit balance, because we have made that payment. Um, so that's to correct the deficit balance in the airport account.
Right, and that was something we approved in the budget.
It was in contingency, it was in the budget, but it was setting in contingency. So we had to move that money from six ninety-nine, um, to four thirty-four.
Okay. Any question?
No, Mr. Davis, no questions.
Yes, ma'am.
On the paperwork, it says number seven, Fund One. On our agenda, it says number six, Fund One.
It's number seven.
Oh, that's my hearing.
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's State Budget Revision Number Seven.
I just want to make sure we're correct.
Yep.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, the state budget revision, number seven, Fund zero-zero-one.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Think you have one more thing, Mr. Davis?
Do I?
Yeah, you have a car, vehicle.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not done spending money. Um, on Thursday, November the nineteenth, uh, we opened bids for twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, or newer public safety vehicles, um, that were approved earlier, um, by the council. We received two bids prior to the closing date and time. Um, one bid was from Whiteside of St. Clair's, Ohio, who, um, proposed twenty-twenty-one Chevy Tahos, which are the bigger SUVs. Um, and we currently do not have any Tahos as police interceptors. Um, the price for vehicles was thirty-nine thousand, nine ninety for total, uh, slightly less than one-point-two million, uh, one million, one fifty-nine, seven nineteen. Uh, the second proposal was from Huffman Ford Sales out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, who did propose twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer, all-wheel-drive police interceptors at a cost of thirty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Uh, the total price for the twenty-nine, uh, police interceptors delivered would be nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We reviewed this, the proposals, uh, both proposals met the, uh, minimum qualifications under scope of services. Um, therefore, we would like to recommend that the bid for twenty-nine, um, twenty-twenty-one Ford Explorer police interceptors be awarded to Huffman Ford Sales in the amount of nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We did check with Huffman Ford. They think if approved, that, um, they'll get, uh, those on the assembly line. And we could have, we could begin seeing, uh, delivery in twelve to fourteen weeks. Of course, we'll then have to get them outfitted. Um, we're developing an RFP now just for the materials. Um, we think that we're going to, because of the amount of cruisers that we're, we're purchasing, um, and because of the turnaround time for the two outfitters that we've used, the one in Morgantown and the one down in the Baltimore area was, was so long, um, we could probably contract, um, do some contracted services, um, through, uh, one of the temp agencies. And we would actually outfit these vehicles, uh, down at seven fifty, uh, Baltimore Street. Um, we're trying it right now for the two, uh, K-nine vehicles that we purchased. And we, we think we can do it cheaper and better and quicker.
Good way to figure it out. Um, one thing I have a question for, and, and this is off of memory. Um, I saw when we opened these up that the Ford Explorers were twenty-twenty's and the Tahos were twenty-twenty-ones.
No, they're both twenty-twenty-ones.
Okay.
Yeah, I double, I double check.
Okay.
Um, we do have, um, if you'll recall, um, we started this process, um, back in, um, February of two thousand eighteen. Um, at that time, we, we established a line of credit. Uh, we went out for competitive bids and established a line of credit of three-point-five billion dollars. Um, remain, remaining in that line of credit is one billion, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. And the line of credit, uh, expires two twenty-two of twenty-three. So, um, we do have funding available if we decide to finance, um, these vehicles.
Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Huffman Ford Sales of nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven, four-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, uh, for twenty-one vehicles.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, and I, and I, um, I think this is all part of, uh, obviously all part of a plan that we put together and, and in order to make sure that, uh, what's that?
The rotation of the fleet.
Absolutely, making sure that we have a rotation put together. So like when I came into council, we had, um, forty-some vehicles that were, uh, not even usable at that time, so.
Well, and this also takes in consideration the two additional deputies that you, uh,
Right.
that you funded a month or so ago. So this is, this bid is, is, is all inclusive. It'll take care of the replacement vehicles for at least the next two years and the two new deputies.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, approach it. It's twenty-nine vehicles. I apologize, I said twenty-one.
Okay. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine. You got, you do have twenty-twenty written in there on the, on the verbiage down here. And up above, you got twenty, I, I thought, I thought.
The bid was for twenty-nine, twenty-twenty or newer.
Okay.
Um, you'll see from the actual bid, um, it is the twenty-twenty-one police interceptors.
Okay.
We didn't know if twenty-twenty-ones would be available when we put the RFP out.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Looks like we're continuing on that path, which is real good. I'm sure those vehicles will be well-used like the ones that we have. Um, I guess that brings us to, uh, items from the public. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Okay, I'll, I'll leave this next one up to you, Mr. Bernhardt.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, I'm in recess.
We are recessed.